Good evening. Let me know when we are ready to go.
We're ready.
Ready to go? Beautiful. Today is Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. It is now 6:01 PM. And this is a regular City Commission meeting of the city of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. Let's do the implication, the pledge allegiance to the roll call, and then we'll go straight into the presentations before taking the rest of the agenda. Please rise.
Good evening. Let's bow our heads, please. Lord, we thank you for all of the blessings that you give us on a daily basis. We also thank you for allowing us to convene in this wonderful place today to honor one of our own. We ask that you continue to watch over all of us as we continue to strive to make our community better. Please protect our military service members as well as our law enforcement officers and firefighters so that they may return home safely after every shift. Lord, we also ask that you give clarity and guidance to our city leaders, elected officials, so that they continue to make the right decisions when it comes to the wellness of the city and its residents. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Please say standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Give him his head. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Mayor Eric Giaspadron.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have court.
Thank you. Let's take item D out of order, please.
Yes, item 11D. This is a presentation of proclamation to police officer Serge Thvenau, nominated to Officer of the Month September 2023, Miami-Dade County Association of Chiefs of Police for his heroic actions.
Chief, please approach.
Good evening to everybody, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Manager, and District 6 Commissioner. Welcome. So, we're here to honor one of our own for an exemplary job that he did. And I'm going to go ahead and read from the commendation that was written to the officer. On Wednesday, September 6th, 2023, at approximately 10:00 PM, Officer Serge Thvenau was on routine patrol driving southbound on Southwest 57th Avenue and Southwest 12th Street when he observed a vehicle following him flashing their high beams and honking their horn. Officer Thvenau immediately pulled off to the side of the road in order to ascertain what the problem was. Upon exiting his vehicle, the driver of the vehicle behind him simultaneously and frantically began shouting, "My baby is not breathing. Please help." The officer immediately moved to the rear of the vehicle and removed the infant from the car seat when he noticed that the infant was both sciaticonic and catatonic and not breathing. Officer Thvenau, realizing the infant's airway was possibly obstructed, reverted back to his training and immediately began to perform CPR on the infant through a combination of chest thrust and back blows until the infant's obstruction was dislodged and began to cry. The officer placed the infant back in the vehicle, and the mother drove the infant to Nicholas Children's Hospital, followed by the officer to ensure a safe arrival. The infant was quickly rushed to an examination room. After a few hours, she was released and expected to make a full recovery. Had it not been for Officer Thvenau's quick thinking and his ability to revert back to his CPR training, the infant perhaps would not have survived as the hospital was a few miles away and fire rescue had not yet been dispatched. Officer Thvenau is recognized and commended for his situational awareness, his quick decision-making, which saved the life of an infant and, at least, saved the infant from potential brain damage. Officer Thvenau's heroic actions reflect great credit upon himself and the West Miami Police Department and the entire law enforcement profession.
Chief, if we could, if we could, let's have, I know there's a few people who want to make comments, and that way we're not getting up and down. Let's, I know you want to present the officer with some very, you know, very nice recognitions. And I know we have County Commissioner as well. So let's get all the words out of the way so we can properly do it. And yeah, so we'll do you first, but let's get an opportunity for the commission to give our gratefulness, and I know the County Commissioner is here as well, and we're very thankful for that. This is an extremely proud day for our city, and as you can tell, our city's police department. We always like to give our officers the equipment and training that they will need to save a life, hoping that they would never actually have to use it, especially with a baby. But what I find so great about this officer's accomplishment is that he's only being recognized because of a silent witness. You know, I remember getting a call at about 10:30 PM, and it was from a member of Commissioner Cabrera's staff, because, you know, they're always on the street. And I, he tells me, "I'm pretty sure one of your officers just saved the baby." And I go, "How do you, what do you mean?" And he goes, "Yeah, I saw some frantic. I saw the officer with the baby. From what I can tell, I think that's what happened." And I actually had a vantage point from the area, and I see a police car, and I see the lights. And at this point, I see cops go away. And then about 10 minutes later, one of our Rescue 40 shows up, kind of looking for an area for something happening. And, you know, I remember talking to the chief next morning, and I asked him, "Did one of our officers save a baby?" And he looked at me and goes, "I don't think so." And then he went to the reports and saw there was a report for baby not breathing. And it wasn't until the night shift woke up that we finally got to the officer. And he just, and the chief will testify to this, just said he was just doing his job, didn't need recognition. I think that's what makes this privilege especially special for me, is the privilege of giving recognition to somebody who was not looking for recognition and was just there to serve and protect the public and do their jobs. And I think, you know, in a greater scheme, in a time where police are so antagonized and attacked, you know, we look at stories like this to show that heroism is often quiet and scandal is loud, right? And it just makes, it just fills me with pride that our city is, and one of our officers is showing, you know, what police do on a daily basis. And you are a shining example of the heroism of police, and you are a testament to it. And we're so happy to have you as an officer and so happy for your great deeds and to have to recognize you even when you don't seek recognition, which is the most important part, because you're just serving your community, protecting the public. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for everyone for being here. I know there's to be some people who want to speak towards, you know, the character of this officer, but I'm very grateful, and I'm glad that you're getting the recognition that you deserve. So with that, I'll just open it quick to my fellow commissioners, and I know Commissioner Cabrera would like to make a few words and provide his own presentation to the officer. So, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Young man, congratulations. Job well done. Not only did you save a baby, a human life, we have also saved many generations to come. Think about that. There will be others that will come after this baby. So, if it wasn't for you, that won't be happening. So, thank you.
Good luck, Commissioner. So, a lot of you know, and some of you may not know, I'm a firefighter. My job on a daily basis is to ride a fire rescue ambulance. And every day, we know that we can be faced with the possibility of this kind of call. We pray it doesn't happen. None of us want to see that. And I've been on calls where ultimately, even though you're highly trained for that situation, individuals panic. There's families panicking. There's mothers and fathers crying. They hand you the baby. And a lot of times, people panic. What you always hope that happens, though, is that you fall back on your training. So the first thing I want to highlight is that I'm very grateful that our officer had the training. I want to thank our chief and his staff for that training, and I want to thank you for having the courage in that insanely difficult and stressful environment to fall back on your training and perform your duties. I have a 19 moto at home, and when I go to shift at the firehouse, it really puts me at ease knowing that when I'm gone for 24 hours, if something were to happen to him, that we have officers like this responding. So, thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Officer. Well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Suarez.
Well, I tell you, I am not a firefighter like Commissioner Chavez, but I am a grandfather. And I know what it means, you know, a little child. You know, in the second life or death is the most important thing in life. So that's why we recognize you, we appreciate your work, and we recognize also and appreciate our police department, which is one of the best in the state. And what can I tell you? This recognizing you tonight is for all your life. And I'm pretty sure the family is very happy, right? So, well, you're very welcome, everybody here, the family, the police. So, Mayor.
Thank you.
Now, we have the County Commissioner.
Absolutely. Please approach, and I know you have something you'd like to present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Chief, and the Administration. You know, like you said earlier, many times, we don't necessarily hear about stories similar to this. And I'd like to commend Officer Thvenau on his bravery and, again, at putting his training to use. Many times, what we hear about are sometimes the things that aren't as popular that might happen. But again, there are so many other officers out there similar to you that do things that don't get any sort of recognition. So what's great today is that we're recognizing somebody who, again, so many heroes walk throughout life amongst us unrecognized, but I'm so happy today that we were able to recognize you for your heroism, for, you know, your call to duty, and again, for saving a life, because ultimately, that's what you did. You saved a life, and we don't, and as you said earlier, that it was generations, and it really is. Because we don't know how many kids this person might have or what might come of it. So again, it could be a future mayor, a future commissioner, who knows what it might be, or a future police officer or firefighter. So again, thank you for your heroism, and thank you for your humbleness and doing the right thing for the right reasons, which you don't see very often. So congratulations again.
Well, Commissioner, if you'd like to make the first presentation to, you spoke last.
I invite you all as well.
Oh, thank you.
So, we do, Officer Thvenau, on behalf of ourselves and the county, and the mayor, and the entire commission, we'd like to provide you with a district commendation for your heroism to recognize your efforts.
Perfect.
Okay, I'll just stay on this side, and you stay over there.
And Commissioner, if you'd stay with us. I know that we also have, from our commission, a recognition for you. And where is it? Who's got it for me? And we're very happy, by the way, that you've been nominated by us for Officer of the Month for the Dade Chiefs Association, which is a big deal, and we hope that that comes through because you very much deserve it. This is a proclamation from our city commission, from myself as mayor and vice mayor, Commissioner Blanca as best police chair, and Commissioner Chavez and Commissioner Suarez, for everything we've talked about. I don't think I need to read it out. I think it's very obvious the heroism you presented, and we're very happy to recognize you. You can put that down on the side, or Commissioner, why don't you carry that?
Yeah, I'm switching.
And I do think that you have a very special presentation.
All right, now. Wait, wait, wait. Right. Be one, two, and three. Perfect. So, in honor of Officer Thvenau's heroism, he receiving the Silver Life Saving Medal, proudly wearing his uniform for everybody to know that he is a common warrior. We're very proud of him.
Floor is yours, Officer.
First, I would like to thank this administration for first taking a gamble on me and letting me be a part of this department. And I would like to also, it's nice that I'm getting this recognition, but it's really to recognize God for putting me on that street and avenue at 10:00 PM at night, and I happened to be there while they were driving. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Officer.
Victor Hernandez, I'm the father. You know, words really can't express what that means to me. The amount of gratitude, and I just want to thank you for your actions that day. They may have seemed minimal to you, but believe me, to a father, it was everything. So, thank you.
Again, thank you so much for everyone who was, and this to me, and my tenure as mayor has been a very special presentation. I don't think I've felt so honored giving a recognition as today, and having the family here testify towards that, I'm sure is very special. And I'm sure for you, who's obviously a leader of faith, you know, really takes it to heart and, again, be an example for, not only for your profession, but for the community at large, which I think is extremely important. So, thank you so much. Thank you for the Commissioner for being here. I know he was very much trying to make it. He was, I think, very proud that his staff caught this. And we thank everyone, the family, family and friends, and other people who are just here to recognize this great individual. So, you know, you can pick up all your awards whenever you'd like. I hope we have more awards coming for the officer, and we hope to, it's kind of weird. We hope not to recognize more officers in this manner. We hope to just recognize them for just simply, you know, the work that they do every day. But, you know, I'm sure things will come in the future, and I hope they react the same way that you did. So, thank you. So with that, break? Yes, well, let's take a two-minute break while we wait for, you know, the stuff. Where's my Vice Mayor? Where's my Commissioner? So I wish we can spend the whole night here recognizing the officer, but unfortunately, we have city business to do, and we have to get out of here at some point. So, you don't have to stay any longer, please. It is not pertinent to you. So, I very much appreciate you making it out. I get my Vice Mayor back and my Commissioner. And our city attorney, my Vice Mayor. Commissioner. Call the meeting back.
We are recognizing our hero.
Absolutely. And I know we have another presentation on the agenda, which is very important. So, let's call the meeting back to order. That was a very important break, but let's move out of order again. We'll go back to the order in a minute, so no second, but let's go out of order. First of all, item E, been notified as being deferred. So let's get that off the agenda. Item F, please.
Yes, item 11F. This is a presentation by Caleb Carter in reference to retire a flag program. We corrected your name. We apologize for.
Yes, I'm reading it here. I go, "That's not the correct spelling." So, let's make sure we do that, please.
We corrected the record.
Approach the podium. And this one, though, please give your name and address for the record to start. Hold on, hold on. I don't want you to start yet. Can someone get, where's Communications Manager? Yeah, okay. You know what? Let's postpone this item for a moment. Just wait, because I would like her to be here. Yeah, so we'll take a quick item out of the way. I apologize. Let's just run through the minutes and et cetera while we wait. So, please, item four.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for August 16, 2023, local planning agency meeting, August 16, 2023, regular commission meeting, September 5, 2023, special commission meeting, intensity budget, and September 20, 2023, special commission meeting and final budget.
You have a motion?
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Seeing none. Passes. Item five.
Item five, public comments.
Is anyone here for public comments not related to an item? Seeing none. Next item.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Would you like to do this report now?
We can do it afterwards, Mayor.
Okay, let's, do the attorney or the engineer have any reports? Okay, let's, uh, do, do the, do the attorney or the engineer have any reports?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, uh, we're still fighting the appeal to the, uh, uh, court of appeals by the, uh, uh, one of the, uh, persons that were fined at some point. So, the last hearing is going to be, uh, October 20th, October 15th, I think.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Engineer, report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I can be quick, just to give a quick update on water projects. Uh, just to let you guys know, Phase 1B is, is complete. We are wrapping up that project, doing final closeout on that. As I'm sure you guys have seen, 59th Avenue came out real nice. Um, we also went out to bid on Phase 2. Uh, we received bids a couple of weeks ago, uh, so we're analyzing those now and, uh, we should be back here to you with a recommendation and getting started on that, uh, probably in the new year. I don't think we want to start breaking roads before the holidays, so, uh, but, you know, we'll probably start construction on that in January.
Beautiful.
But, uh, yeah, other than that, um, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the engineer?
None.
None? Thank you. Are we ready? Give me a thumbs up. Are you ready for Ms. Carter's presentation? If we're not, we can keep going. It's not a.
Mayor, if I may, can I introduce two?
Absolutely.
New, um, additions to our staff?
Please do so.
If, uh, our finance director and our facilities manager come upstairs, come to the podium for a second, please. I want to introduce, as you all know, uh, Mercedes Leon retired at the end of September. And I want to take this moment to introduce formally to the commission, our new finance director, Isabel Rangel. And, um, she's already started to look at our systems and she's going to help us modernize our, our financing modules, hopefully. If you want to say hello to the commission.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Um, I have met each and every one of you individually. It's been a pleasure and it's a privilege to be here.
Well, we're happy to have you and I know you bring a wealth of experience, so, uh, we look forward to, uh, modernizing and revolutionizing our finance department and the, and the budgets that we put forward in this couple of years. So, thank you.
And I'm sure you've all seen Franklin Murthel around and about. Um, he's been with us for almost a month now. Some of his handiwork is the wall, the wall and the modernization of our, of our chambers behind us, the wall downstairs. Uh, and some of the remodeling that we're doing downstairs. Uh, we're very proud and pleased to have him as part of our staff. If you want to say a couple of words, hello.
I'm happy to be here. I've met the mayor before, a couple of council members. I'm very happy to be here. Whatever you guys need, that's what I'm here to do.
Well, you work very, you work very fast and, and incredible craftsmanship, so I've already seen some of it, so we're happy, we're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Of course, go ahead.
You, you, you was the person who created the Domino's.
Yes, sir, I was.
And the, and the festivity we have with the, oh, the Domino tournament.
Yes, sir.
And you did that mural there.
Yes, sir.
Was nice.
Thank you.
Congratulations, huh? Congratulations. It was a different thing. It was a different thing with the Domino's there and it was nice.
Glad you liked it.
Thank you. Repeat it. Do it again.
I will. Have a good night.
Thank you. Um, are we ready for item D? We're ready for item D? Yes? All right. Read the item again, please. Correct name.
Yes, presentat- F, F.
Oh, uh, F, I apologize.
Yes, presentation by Kaylee Carter in reference to retire a flag program.
Now, please approach. Go straight into it, if you'd like.
Oh, look at that.
Um, okay, good evening. I am so excited to be starting my project with the city of West Miami. Um, I'd like to thank Mayor Eric and the commission for helping, um, my program come to life. So, my name is Callie Carter and for my goal to work project, I will be creating a flag retirement program, um, for the city. So, I believe by creating a place where people can drop off old flags, these flags can now be properly retired.
Give us a moment. There we go.
All right, so the goal is to implement a flag retirement program in the city that will enable residents to easily dispose of American flags that are old, damaged, or no longer fit to serve as an emblem of the United States, so that the city of West Miami can ensure the proper retirement of the flags in accordance with the US flag code. So, when I ask why does it even matter to go all the way to City Hall to drop off the flag when I can just throw it out myself? But, uh, when a flag reaches a state where it's no longer fit to display, such as being torn, it is our responsibility to retire it properly in accordance with the US flag code. Um, and this involves a solemn burning of the flag, usually done by the American Legion or Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts. Um, so while burning may seem contrary to the flag symbolism, it's actually important to do so. Okay, so the phases of the project were planning and purchasing, implementation and communication, and then ongoing sustainment. And so that's going to be the box.
Keep going.
The box. And so for engagement of the community, we're going to place it at City Hall. Uh, we're going to have an unveiling ceremony, hopefully. And then we'll notify our residents through the website and social media. And we'll have quarterly drop-off of the flags, so once every month or two months. Yeah, and for me, this project is important, not only because the flags are being properly disposed of, but I'm hopefully educating people in the city about the value and symbolism of the flag and flag etiquette. So by doing this, as a city, we are honoring the tradition of burning, paying our respect to the veterans who fought for the country and learning and being reminded of what the flag symbolizes.
Thank you. And, uh, I know you've been a very active resident for us. Um, and you've been, uh, talking to me about this for a while and coming up with your project. And I think you've picked a really important one. Um, you know, residents always tell me, where can I dispose of the flag? And, and so many of our residents showcase the American flag. And sometimes you see them damaged and they want an easy way to do it without, without breaking flag etiquette, without breaking flag code. Um, and I think it's a very important thing and I think it will play a very prominent role, uh, right in front of our City Hall. Uh, Mr. Manager, has there been any, uh, I know, oh.
He walked out.
He, he walked out. I, I believe we've, um, we've already in, in communication with you, uh, been working to procure. Do we have any updates on that from staff, uh, on the, on the procurement of the box?
Of the box?
Yes. Is there any updates on that?
It hasn't been discussed about yet.
Okay, so we have, um, you know, so that, that, we've been working with it in conjunction with, with, with yourself. And, uh, we look forward to that ceremony where we're unveiling it, uh, your gold score project. And, um, you know, uh, I know that my fellow commissioners probably agree on its importance and, uh, we're very happy that you brought us this project and that we were able to do it with you.
What school do you go to?
I go to Gulliver.
Gulliver, awesome. And so this is for a senior project?
No, this is for Girl Scouts.
For Girl Scouts. I remember you came before us a few months ago. Um, and I said it then, I'll say it again. You're an impressive young woman to be taking time out of your daily life to do something like this, even to be in the Girl Scouts to begin with. But our city's going to benefit from this. As the mayor stated, we have a lot of veterans that live in this community. My father is one of them. And that flag means a lot to not only them, but us as well. So it needs to be properly disposed of and, and we really appreciate that you're doing this project for our city.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you so much for enriching us civically. Thank you for taking the time and, and coming and, and, and like I say, enriching us, uh, civically. Thank you so much.
Mayor, you can see it's a smart girl.
Absolutely.
Look at her face. She's smart.
Absolutely.
Smile and a happy girl and a smart, good. Congratulations. You have a drive inside of you. Keep it. Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Now, the, the manager's back. Do we have an update on the, the procurement on the box?
We're working on it. I will, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you'd have stuff tonight. I have it downstairs. If she calls the office tomorrow or you in the morning, I will, I'll let you know where we're at with it.
Beautiful. Uh, and then when that comes in, we'd like to, uh, do a ceremony, uh, unveiling. Um, and, uh, I know our communications team is going to work with, uh, Ms. Carter to, uh, to get this done and then make sure that it's promoted and, and people know where to dispose of it and how to do it. And again, we're very excited for this, for this project. You know, I, I got a special appreciation for the American flag. We've, we've talked about more projects we can do, but this is an incredible first step and, uh, and a big one. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to take one more item out of, out of order, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Um, and that is, uh, the mitigation. You know what? I think let's, the mitigation for, we're going to take both mitigations out of order. We're going to do this. We're going to get chambers cleared and people at dinner, so, um, let's, uh, take item J and then following item, item I and J. And following we'll do item, uh, G and H.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Item J is a request for mitigation.
Item, item I.
It's resolution, item I, I meant. Request for mitigation of liens for code violations at the property located at 6500 Southwest 8th Street and owner discount auto parts.
Good afternoon, Council Nicholas Alonso, on behalf of Discount Auto Parts for property address 6500 Southwest 8th Street. These are requests for mitigation for eight liens that stem from 2022 to 2023. Um, some of these liens, I could go through them one by one if, if that would be easier for you. But these, these liens revolve around blight, uh, hedge trimming, debris and trash, um, dumpster enclosure. And as of today, they're totaling close to $117,000 with the crude fines. The, the steps taken by, by the property owner, you know, they were completed within three months, four months of the actual violation date. And the reason for that is that sometimes the headquarters are out in North Carolina and Virginia. And it takes a while for them to actually move on these property management issues. Um, we're not local. I am, but they're not. So it does take a little bit of time. Um, and we do ask for a significant reduction based on the, uh, the amount of time it took for us to actually comply. So we're looking at, in, you know, hopes that you all agree, a 90% reduction of the 117, um, currently imposed on these liens.
Okay, um, let's get a, uh, administration to give their reading of the situation and also, uh, a recommendation.
Um, I'm going to have the code officer come up to the podium and, and give you the thing, but it, and I will follow that up with my recommendation unless you want my recommendation.
No, no, let, let, let the code officer come up and then follow your recommendation. Did you have a question before that?
Counsel? You mentioned that it takes a very long time for headquarters to communicate with the, with the, with the, uh, with the management, property management.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and unfortunately, that's an internal issue.
We're living in an era of communication is, is at the speed of light. There's, there's no excuse for that.
And I agree.
So, you know, if, if, if this happens again, you know, I for one will not mitigate this any fine.
No, I understand, sir.
So you have to, you, you have to tell them that they need to do better than this. I mean, you know, it's very lame to, to stand there and say that, uh, they're in North Carolina. That's just, 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 you know, uh, with today's communication, that's right around the corner. There's no excuse for that.
No, I understand and, and no, you're totally right. There isn't an excuse for that. Um, but it's, it's, it's a very large company. It's not a mom and pop shop and I can, I understand. Things should move a lot quicker. But, you know, when it comes to actually contracting for the work and getting the work completed, you know, a lot of these, uh, larger retailers take longer than that to, to complete. We're, we're, we, we comply within, you know, two to three months of each violation. I know it's not ideal, you know, for the city. I completely understand, but, you know, we've taken the proper steps.
Well, you, you communicate to them and let know the importance that we feel that they need to take, uh, as far as communication and getting the work done.
Yes, sir, I will.
Uh, and correct these issues if they arise again.
Well, to his point too, part of the reason you're in front of us today is because of that policy that it takes two or three months. During that time, the liens are piling up and now you have to come in front of us for mitigation.
Uh, can we get the code officer up here and then recommendation from council, from administration?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, administrative staff, manager. Actually, these fines, um, I've been with the city about a year and three months. And these fines were, some of these fines were given to Advance Total before me. So, it's been more than, uh, two and three months that it took them to correct the violations. They did correct the violations, but it, it took them a lot more than, than two or three months. I've, in some cases, it took them seven to eight months to correct these violations. That's why the fines escalated to the point that they are now.
And, and, and the fines went to miss, uh, to 117,000 in eight months?
Uh, it's, it's been more than a year, Mayor, in some of these cases. So yes, it's accrued on a daily basis and, and as it stands right now, it's 116,722. As a, as the council, as the commission knows, you know, we're trying to beautify in our, our corridors and our commercial corridors. And that's one of the things that has been done in the past and that's one of the things that's, I've been charged with and doing and now with my new administration. Part of that is maintaining your property. Part, part, part of that is, you know, that's our front porch. That's our, that's our main corridor, our main commercial corridor. It has to be viable and it has to look well. On top of that, we've had also some issues with some of their patrons and, and, and changing, uh, changing oil and things like that. I had a sidebar with their attorney to make sure that that doesn't happen in the past. Um, if you'd like, Mayor, I can give you my recommendation, which is, would be 20% of what's owed right now. And I think the attorney had indicated that that would be reasonable. And with, and we'll leave it at that, but you'd be a first time, if, if the commission so chooses to go with my recommendation. You're a first time offender. If it happens again, there won't be a break. Um, and we will be watching it because that is a very important corridor for us.
Um, let, let me ask the attorney, Mr. Alonso, right?
Correct.
Um, is, is that a, is that a, is that something that your clients are willing to accept the mitigation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, what is the amount on the mitigation?
The amount would be, it's 23,344 dollars and 40 cents.
Okay. Does anyone have any, uh, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'd like to mitigate this and, you know, work with the, uh, work with the attorney and make sure that this stuff doesn't happen again. Um, that's a significant fine. Just because you're mitigating 20% or mitigating 80% less, doesn't mean this fine isn't significant. So I, I think it does, uh, go back to what we're trying to do, which is compliance. And, uh, and I, believe me, I, I mean, again, like you said, if the client keeps, you know, screwing up with, screwing with the neighborhood, there's obviously going to be, you know, bigger, uh, you know, penalties. So this is, uh, I think I'm, I'm in favor of, of, of this mitigation. Does anyone have any, uh, questions, concerns, comments, or motions?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
May I comment?
Yep.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
You are a lawyer, right? You're not an attorney.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm an attorney. I actually am in-house counsel for Advance. I'm, I'm barred in the state of Florida.
I know. So, I mean, so you are not in, in the business of drop oil on the ground.
No, sir.
Because that's a very serious problem. And we are not neither in that business, you know? So we try to, your company, the company you represent, large, small or large, have a responsibility. And this one is very serious, you know, the, the, um, the oil and all these things, contaminations are very serious. And every day is worse. So we try to, we try to work with your company, try to keep our city clean, keep our city neighbors happy and try to keep your business open. We are not in the, in the business of closed business. So the administration is recommending about $23,000 and a $117,000 because, you know, the time passed. So, I think that's a very nice number for you company.
And I agree, Mr. Suarez. Mr. Suarez, if I may ask you a question. The issue that we've been running around when it comes to oil being spilled on the ground is that, and we experience this all nationwide, we have, we call them private, private mechanics. It's, it's, it's our company policy not to do any type of oil, uh, changes. The only thing that we would do is complimentary services, which pretty much revolve around windshield wiper replacement and battery testing. We don't change oil in the stores.
But, you know, the, the point is you people have to be vigilant, you know, about the, the customers outside.
And we, we do, and we do, and sometimes we feel hostility and sometimes it's, it's, it's an aggressive behavior towards our team stores. So I'm asking, my, my question to you is how can we approach some of these? some of these private mechanics in order to not be caught in one of these violations again?
Call the police.
Call the police?
Sure.
Work on the side of the administration on that. This council shouldn't be giving advice on this.
We have a very strong and nice and smart code enforcement people here. That, Mr. Alvarez is a person with experience, and he's fast.
Yeah. I've actually spoken to Mr. Alvarez.
So, yeah, I'm talking about the code enforcement. And I tell you, if your people, your company trained your people and tell the people responsibility, tell the guy, hey, you cannot do that. You want to do that, go to your house, go to the park, whatever.
I agree.
You want to confront the police, you have to confront, but not here. And if you help us, and we try to help you. So, I agree with the administration, the $23,000.
Vice Mayor and then Commissioner.
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh.
Before we, before we do a motion, Mayor, I'm so sorry. I need a, how long will it take Advanced Auto to pay this?
Sixty days.
That's fine.
Okay. Could you read the resolution with the numbers? We have a motion, and we have a second. Read the resolution, and then we'll get the motion in a second.
First, second.
Yeah, read the resolution, then we'll motion. Go.
Yes. Item J, resolution of Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of $23,344 from Discount Auto Parts on code enforcement liens for code violations at the property located at 6500 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid in sixty days, then the amount owed shall revert to the original lien amount, providing for an effective date.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner.
We have a motion by Chavez.
A motion, who made the motion?
Chavez.
Chavez?
Second by Vice Mayor Blanes.
Second by Vice Mayor Blanes.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Let's take item G and H.
Thank you.
And by the way, Mayor, let me tell you, you're a young attorney.
Yes, sir.
So, you have an experience tonight here with the kid. Do you know the police who saved that girl?
Yes, sir.
You said something that you did not expect to that.
I did not. I did not. It was actually kind of nice.
But now you're going to home, and you're going to tell your wife, or your mother, or daughter, or the dog, or the cat, whoever you talk to, you're going to tell about it.
No, I definitely will. Definitely will. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Alonzo.
Thank you.
Item G?
Item G, request for mitigation of lien for code violation on the property located at 6227 Southwest 14th Street and owners Freddie and Sophia Campbell.
Campbells.
Good evening.
Is that your name and address on the record? I know it's here, but, but the name and address?
Sophia Campbell.
Freddie Campbell.
And address?
6227 Southwest 14th Street.
Thank you so much. Please, go ahead.
We've been sided with the, so let me start. My husband runs a construction company. We do rehab homes. This is our livelihood. This is how we make money and how we live and how we eat and how we pay the roof over our house. For many years, we've been with the city now for like eight years. For many years, we've had our work trailer parked on our driveway. It does not, it did not disturb anyone. We were not aware that it was against city code until we were informed. As soon as we were informed, I reached out to you, Mr. Mayor. I reached out to Mr. Silva. We had lengthy discussions about the situation because we had got incited for this trailer that we had no idea was not allowed since we had had it there for the past almost eight years. Long story short, we, we were able to find, although you may not believe this, it is very difficult to find a storage unit that one is available for parking space and two that is inexpensive. Needless to say, we found one not in the best of neighborhoods. This is where my husband keeps his daily tools. He hauls it in and out daily to his work sites. We found a spot, not in a very good neighborhood. The, the trailer got broken into, got messed around with a little bit. I had to bring it back home. That was when I reached out to Mr. Silva again, and I asked him to give me a little bit more time. But apparently, I don't know if that was advised to Mr. Alvarez, who continued to give me citations about this. Now I have a lien on the property. I was provided this piece of paper on my door, the date of the original. So, I guess I had a hearing back in July. I was not aware. Didn't even receive it in the mail. I got home after a trip to North Carolina. If you need to see proof of that, I can show you that as well. This was stuck on, with tape on my front door. We clearly, we missed the, the original hearing. I did not know. I came back. I spoke to Mr. Peña, who's no longer with us, and he told me that they would go ahead, and correct me if I'm wrong, they told me they would go ahead and put us back on the docket to come in front of you guys. Months have passed until we started reaching out to Anethys, and Freddie's been in contact with Anethys for some time to get us back on the docket. We're finally here. Long story short is, we don't want any trouble. We don't want liens on our, where we lay our heads.
Absolutely.
And it was very costly for us to have this trailer, not only, you know, a financial burden to have it parked elsewhere. I mean, we're talking about hundreds of dollars, not $200, we're talking hundreds of dollars. But we also took a hit of it getting damaged and broken into. So, we're here to ask that if you can possibly waive that, that fine and lift that lien because the last thing we want is any trouble on our homestead.
Mr. Manager, do we have a recommendation?
Yes, and we've had conversations. In fact, I think we spoke on the way home from North Carolina.
Yeah.
Which we had a very lively conversation. I talked to them beforehand. They are in compliance. They were maybe not aware of our ordinances in terms of that. So, my recommendation to the commission is waive it, remove the lien, obviously. But I have one condition and one ask, and I think we spoke about it before. They're, they have an addition that they've started that isn't completely permitted, and that's okay. But I want to give them 30 days to finalize that and pull the permit so that we don't have any other issues with you all, and we can, you know, at the end of the day, I charge, the commission's charge is compliance.
Absolutely.
You're in compliance. We don't want to penalize our residents. We want to be good neighbors, and I'm just asking you to be the same.
Absolutely. And we 100% agree with that.
So, just make sure, let's make sure that, I think the engineer, let's make sure the engineer, you get in touch with, with our public works department.
They have one more little item to resolve on the permit, and they have it.
Okay.
Yeah, we just received a revision, I think it was yesterday, in fact. So, we've already been in contact with our engineer and our architect, and he's revising, it's like a minor tweak. We've had a couple of rounds. I want to say like four rounds.
Yeah.
So, we've had minor tweaks. Instead of just going ahead and pulling permits and plans for demoing the addition, we decided to just might as well, we're going to spend the money, we might as well make, do the plans and just expand.
Understood. You don't need to explain anymore.
Okay.
The, you guys all know I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not super lenient on mitigations. Even when residents come, I mean, we have a real discussion. I think the waiver is appropriate. I go with the recommendation of the management on this one. Anyone has any questions or comments? But I would also accept a resolution and a motion.
I just want to make one comment. You realize that all the laws, rules and regulations that we have are for your own benefit?
Absolutely. And I'm not disagreeing with them.
For your quality of life and that of your neighbors. And we also have our own permitting department, which saves you from having to go to Miami-Dade County and obtain permits. You come straight to us. And unfortunately, that costs money to operate a permitting department with planned engineers that are going to revise your plans and double make sure that everything's all right. So, you know, we do expect you to help and support, you know, the continuation and the operation of this permitting department. Because, you know, I, if I want to put a new roof on my house, I sure don't want to go to Miami-Dade County and get a permit when I can just come right here and get it here. So, so, you know, everything that we do is to contribute to your well-being, to your quality of life. So, you know, just think about that.
No, absolutely. And I, and again, I agree. And the convenience of living in this city, and like I said, we wouldn't, we still wouldn't be in this city if we didn't like the management and the way that it's ran and the tidiness and the neatness of how everything is ran. And by all means, we have no intentions to not comply. In fact, we, we immediately complied with removing the trailer. The only reason why we brought it back was because it got broken into. As far as the addition, this has been, I want to say since April.
That's fine. That's.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get you guys, let's get you guys to dinner. I know, you know, we don't want to eat, but I know every resident should. So, let's, Commissioner, do you have something?
Just going to make the motion.
Okay. Read the resolution, please, with the management recommendation.
Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to waive the, the amounts for code enforcement lien for code violations at the property located at 6227 Southwest 14th Street, providing that if payment, no payment, and the amount shall revert to the original amount. And the conditions of the city manager is, are that.
The condition is within 30 days, they must have obtained their building permit. Thirty business days.
Yes, sir.
And before we add the motion, we all go to the release of lien. We're going to take care of that.
Right. And then the condition is obviously if you don't pull that permit within 30 days, it reverts back to the fine. But that's standard and all our stuff. And I am, and we will accept the release of lien as well, will provide it after they have pulled their building permit.
Okay. I just want to make sure you get that off your, your home.
Yeah. So, so just to be clear, after this conversation today, we will not be accruing any?
You will not for 30 days, provided that you pulled your building permit.
Okay. Got it.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for anything you have.
Mayor, if I may, I am so sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
I have two items.
Yes.
That I would like to bring up to the commission, please. And I know that with extraordinary circumstances, one of them is we found a tree trimming truck, and the other one is administrative in nature in that our new finance director needs a resolution authorizing her to sign checks.
Absolutely. Do we, do we have a, we need a four-fifths vote. Do we have a motion and a second to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All with favor say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Those items will be heard at the end of the agenda.
Next item, please. Let's go, let's go, let's go back to the order of the agenda. Let's go to report to the manager.
So, report the item six, report to the city manager.
Good evening. We're going back to where we started from. I already asked for the request for the, for the hearing resolution, the tree trimming truck. What I would like to say is we've been able to obtain it as a significant reduction in pricing. We'll talk about it when it comes up. There's a few things that I'm going to ask for on that as when we, when it comes up. I'm also very pleased to announce that the Transportation Planning Organization has funded our request for continuation of our freebie program and an additional grant of $50,000 a year. Very much appreciative of the efforts of the director of the TPO, our staff, and especially our mayor for helping me out with this and getting us being able to get this vital funding source. Please do announce that our street cleaning initiative will commence. We will be getting our trash bins, trash bins, our 95-gallon trash bins, as with a rollout date of November the 13th. And they will be, those trash bins will be directly given to all the residents of the city at no cost. Also, we have also have entered into contract to have our sanitation truck retrofitted to be able to help our sanitation crew be able to do their job. We are, we're announcing that we will start doing five-day bulk pickup services. We're doing four now. And we're also purchasing a water trailer so that we can begin continuing on their mayor's street cleaning initiative and start pressure cleaning our sidewalks on a consistent basis. I've introduced our staff members. I, on another note, and this is, and we'll have this discussion off board. I don't really want to touch on this too much, but the, the attempts at the unionization of the public's, of the facilities and public works department in the back has, has been, they've sent in a notice for decertification, and I've got that back from the state of Florida a couple of hours ago. So, kudos to them and kudos to this council because they understood through, through my staff that they really, we care about our employees and we want to take care of employees and make this a family, a family to make sure that we provide the services to our residents in our city. The city engineer talked about the water project. As the city approaches City Government Week, which is at the end of this month, I want to give credit and, and thanks to the current staff for having worked so well with me in my first four months here in transitioning our city into a service-oriented city that will provide the services that our residents need and deserve. As you drive around the city, you'll see some of that stuff from newly planted trees, the removal of dead trees, tree trimming upon request, which we already have started, rapid response to most of our residential concerns, and we are entering an era of which services are responsive and effectual for all our residents. I close in reminding you on a few things that are upcoming. Congresswoman Maria Vario Salazar's Service Academy Recruitment Day is on October 12th at 6:00 PM. On October the 21st, there is a citizenship drive between Kevin Cabrera's office and Mayor Levine-Cava starting at 10:00 AM. And of course, we have the Halloween Spooktacular event on October 31st at 5:00 PM at the recreational complex. And lastly, but most importantly, we will be having the city's first ever state-of-the-city event on November the 9th. Look for those details in a mailer that will be going out shortly. That'll be at 7:00 PM, it'll be, it'll be at 7:00 PM at the Renaissance Ballroom. And that, with that, that concludes my manager's report along with the report that I usually hand out. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the manager?
No.
Beautiful, thorough. Next item?
We proceed now with item 10 under Finish Business.
We have committee reports. Anyone for committee reports?
No committee report.
Ah, no committee reports.
Beautiful. Next item?
Item 10 on Finish Business, first reading. This item was deferred at the September 20th, 2023 commission meeting, and this is in ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, amending City of West Miami Zone in Ordinance to 82 as amended. Section 4A3, general regulations coming to R1, R2, A and C use districts prohibiting the overnight parking of any commercial-type vehicle on any public or private, private in an R1, R2, or A use district, except in a completely enclosed garage or site of the dwelling, providing for registration and registration fee, providing for penalties, providing for conflict, providing for separability, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date.
Motion.
Second.
That's the first reading. Read the, the recall.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. And the second reading and public hearing will be scheduled for November 1st, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Next item, Mr. Mayor?
Also, a clarification that was just sent to me. Actually, it's on, it's my fault. There's, I think I sent in the, or autocorrected the wrong information to the manager. The citizenship drive that he spoke about is with the Cuban American Bar Association instead of the mayor. So, that's just a clarification, and that's, that's, that's autocorrected on my end. So, I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay. Item B is first reading. This item was deferred at the September 20th, 20th, 2023 commission meeting, and it's in ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, amending Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5-5, by providing for a substitute schedule of fees and services rendered by the city as recommended by the city engineer and attached hereto, and made a part thereof as Exhibit A, providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date.
I have a.
Motion.
Wait.
I know it's a first reading, but just point of clarity, is this for commercial only? It's not going to affect residents, correct?
So, the, what we did was basically kind of go through the entire fee schedule that we haven't updated in a couple of years, modernized it a bit, cleaned it up a bit. There was a lot of kind of confusion on some items. There was, you know, simplification of the schedule. The only thing that would go up for residents is we raised the minimum permit fee. Most of the increases happened in commercial. We did not have any increases in residential, except for the minimum permit fee, which currently is $150. So, you know, if you have a couple of windows you're putting in, minimum fee is $150. We raised that to $200. And the reason being, simply, you know, $150 And the reason being simply, you know, $150, you know, barely covers an inspection. So that's the only increase to residents will be the minimum fee. So everything else will stay the same for residents.
All right, we'll, we'll dissect it further at second reading. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second, call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
On the new business?
Ah, yes, on item 11 on the new business agenda items, 11A, this is a second reading and a public hearing. In ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, adding article 3, section 4-27, 1-10, water conservation for landscape irrigation, providing for local implementation of the mandatory year-round landscape irrigation conservation measures, rule of the South Florida Water Management District, providing definitions, providing for landscape irrigation schedule, providing exceptions to the landscape irrigation schedule, providing for a requirement to operate technology that inhibits or interrupts an irrigation system during periods of sufficient moisture, providing for variances for the specific day of the week limitations, providing for penalties for violations, providing for codification, conflict, separability and providing an effective date.
Now read it backwards. Now, there's a, can you, can you provide what this is?
A very short synopsis, Mayor, is the South Florida Water Management District got in touch with us. In fact, they came to one of our meetings, send us chapter 41-24, which was effective July 14th, 2014, which is a policy that was adopted and, and in ordinance that was adopted by the South Florida Water Management District, comprising of a mandatory year-round landscape irrigation conservation measure. It's in the ordinance, it's pretty much everything that we've been doing all along. But they asked us to codify it into our ordinances as well and that's really what we're here for.
Housekeeping, we have a motion on this?
Mayor, you have to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Public hearing on this item is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll make a second.
We have a second, call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
Item B, first reading. In ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, amending chapter 9, article 7 of the Code of Ordinances, transient vacation rentals, including additional definitions, expanding life safety requirements, requiring smoke and carbon monoxide detectors hardwired to main electrical system in every room of the vacation dwelling, requiring ground fault circuit interruptors, requiring licensed electrical contractors to conduct any electrical installation, increasing license to cost to $2,500 per, dollars per year, limiting to one permit and one unit per vacation rental dwelling, requiring proof of registration of vacation rental property with the property appraiser of Miami-Dade County, providing for sanctions, repealing sections of chapter 9, section 7 in conflict with this ordinance, providing for separability, providing for renumbering, providing for codification and providing for an effective date.
This is a first reading and Vice Mayor, you have, you have your work cut out for you in unpacking this next, when it comes? So we have a motion and a second.
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Suarez, a second by Vice Mayor Blanes. Call the roll.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. And second reading and public hearing will be scheduled for November 1st, 2023.
Okay, next item.
Item C, this is a first reading, in ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami, relating to commercial waste pickup serviced by the city of West Miami, amending chapter 8, garbage and trash, article 2, fees for city service, section 8-26, parent B, parent 2 of the city code, increasing the quarterly fees from $62.50 to $500.00, providing schedule of fees for collection and disposal, providing separability, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing for codification and providing an effective date.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, call the roll.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. And second reading and public hearing, November 1st, 2023. Now we go to item K. A resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami relating to medium equipment purchase of a Vermeer SC-382 stump cutter from Vermeer Southeast Sales and Services Inc. under the cooperative purchase program from the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract Number FSA 20-Equip 18.0 in the amount of $38,855.0 and providing for an effective date.
Do we have a motion? Does anyone, well, first of all, I, I know you're all briefed, does anyone need explanation of this item? You, you have something to say on this item?
No, I just want to make a comment that we, we really need this thing because we have a lot of, in, in the sidewalks, you know, with the trees that we have, we need this. And that, that, the, the machine that we have now is not good enough. So I think this is, is necessary today.
We've needed a lot of things for a long time.
Yes, I make a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion by Commissioner Suarez, a second by Vice Mayor Blanes, call the roll.
Okay, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Item L, please.
Item L, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, approving non-pro-tongue to September 21st, 2023, the execution of the 2024-2026 Urban Qualification Cooperation Agreement between Miami-Dade County and the city of West Miami, allowing the city to submit funding requests through Miami-Dade County for assistance from the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership and Emergency Solutions Grant, which are federal assistance programs administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, providing that the city meets the eligibility criteria defined under each program and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do you have a motion on this item?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item from the additions.
And now we proceed to the added items to the agenda.
Let's start with item, obviously unnumbered item on the freightliner.
Yes, item is, this item is for the freightliner. A resolution of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami declaring an emergency and waiving the requirements for seal bids as required by article 4, section 2-74 of the city code, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with FRM Truck Max Inc. for the purchase of a 2024 freightliner M2 Cummins B67L with the Terrex XT Pro Forestry Cheaper, 61 foot, feet high bucket truck in the amount of $174,437.0 and providing for an effective date.
Administration, you want to explain this item, I know it's an add-on?
Yes, yes, Mayor, this is an item. This is something that Kevin Cabrera's office has, has given us a grant for $225,000 to buy a tree trimming truck. As you well know, way before my tenure here, it was, there was a potential for a contract, but we would not have gotten it until the end of 2024, 2025, because it was claimed that there was no availability. This recently came online, we're saving $50,000 that we'll be able to reallocate for some other use down the road, hopefully for a new bus for our children, for the after-school program. And it's a substantial savings as to the original contract at $174,000. Delivery, delivery will, will occur within two to three weeks as, when they, they're, they need, as soon as they have the PO signed and everything's dotted, they will drive it down from their, their plant that's in, I believe it's in Virginia. In Virginia, and it takes about a couple of weeks after the PO is given to them for us to have it. But the good news is, we don't have to wait until the end of 2024, 2025, we can get our hands on it quicker.
Beautiful, I'll be in communication with Commissioner Cabrera's office to make sure that the funds, which I know were marked for this vehicle, reallocated to us for our use, for, again, for whatever other resources we need. Does anyone have any motions or comments on this item? Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Manager, there's no issue with the, I don't know if it was a contract or an agreement to purchase one, one of these trucks in 2025?
The, the original contract really was more of a proposal and we've reached out to him and let him know that we're moving on.
So there's no issue?
No.
Okay, all right.
So you have the answer, you have the answer you want. We don't have problem with the previous contract, right? That's the answer you was looking for.
Yeah, the previous administration somehow had come into an agreement or a contract to purchase this vehicle in 2025. We're, you know, we're in 2023.
You make the answer that if we don't have any problem with that contract.
That's, that's what he said, he said there's no problem. He's making sure, making sure that, that the answer is that there's no problem with the contract.
No problem, okay. Now, I have, I see here, this bucket go to 61 feet high.
The original one that we had contracted was the same height, Commissioner.
Yeah, that is the same, it's a high, 61.
Yeah, it's very tall.
And this is 50,000 less expensive than the other one, right?
That is correct.
So that's the project.
Well, and what it is, is that they, somebody had purchased this and they, they backed out of their contract. So it, we've been hunting around trying to find a replacement for a couple of months now. And it luckily, we luckily hit it at the right moment.
All right, do you have a motion on this item?
Motion.
I want to say something.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Manager, and your staff for actually putting forth an effort to make the calls and look and search and find this vehicle. Because, you know, that took time and that took effort. So I, I, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Are you going to just compliment him or are you going to make a motion? You going to give a motion over here?
Second.
We have a second, all right, thank you, let's call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, add-on item number two on the bank signatures?
Yes, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, removing the bank signature of retired finance director Mercedes Leon effective September 29th, 2023, and adding the signature of new finance director Isabel Blanco de Angel, with an effective date of October 1st, 2023.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Item 12, please.
Yes, item 12, consent agenda items, known this evening. Item 13, good of the order.
Anyone for good of the order?
Good night.
Seeing none. Anyone for motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion, meeting adjourned.
Good night.